Let's call this meeting to order, if we could please. Nelsom Fiscal Court will meet in closed session per KRS 61810-1C for discussions of proposed criminal litigation against or behalf of a public agency. We will do that at the tail end of our regular business meeting. I don't want you to get to read that again. First order of business would be the minutes from the past meeting, December 18th meeting. I did sketch them pretty good, but I don't, you know, that's some job that you're going to have to take up there Gary. Sam was my proofreader.
Sam read every period.
But I had reviewed it and sketched them and actually read them, but the only thing that I had questions was all these drawings right here at the back page too. I wouldn't have known if they were right or wrong. On the design guidelines for them.
I hope they're right.
entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion been made by Jeff Lear, seconded by Keith Metcalf. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. You two new magistrates, if I call you all by the wrong name here after a while, don't be offended.
And you two good.
Well, you gotta go back 25 years. The bills list and transfers and the additional bills list was mailed to you guys. Some pays on there for courthouse project, we'll get an update on that after a while. Audit services, pretty significant. I think most of you, Rhonda's answered some questions for you guys individually.
The interstate security systems, we have paid that and they're going to reimburse us, the insurance company?
Working on it as we speak. I don't think we've got a check on that yet. entertain a motion to approve the bills and transfers and additional bills.
Motion to pay the bills and transfers.
Motion been made by Bernard Ice, seconded by Gary. Further discussion?
I got one question.
Okay.
We put a new AC unit in somewhere and it don't say where it went.
What, on the?
On first page. About 10 up from the bottom. It says Lidl Town, it's a new AC unit, parts on there.
That's the state office building.
State office. So it's reimbursed too.
That's code, did Rhonda remember that pretty good.
No, it's not reimbursed, we own that building.
Yeah, we own that building.
Oh, down here.
Yeah.
They'll run it from the office.
Okay. Any other questions?
The audit services, does Bill change?
That's the sheriff's.
Sheriff, okay.
That was Ed's outgoing.
Other questions? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Last court meeting, I recognize some of the outgoing elected officials. However, Magistrate Han was absent from that meeting and after from the last few meetings, I felt to recognize Jerry Han's service to the community. I want to thank Jerry personally and publicly for his service. I felt that when I remember I got up there and talked to him and I felt to do that, just wanted everybody to know that Jerry was great to work with, enjoyed working with him and he did a good job. He was a team player. Next order of business would be the sheriff's 2019 budget. You guys have received a copy of that, passed out the last court meeting. Also passed out today is the annual order setting the maximum salary for the sheriff deputies within his office and within his budget. Those totals add up to what those numbers were, or Rhonda helped him with those. The, I'm gonna go over the advancement first. First thing I would do is ask for a motion to approve the sheriff's 2019 budget and the order setting the maximum salaries.
I'll make a motion for that.
Motion been made, sir, seconded. Seconded by Gary. Discussion. Questions? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Get those motions written. Next would be the county clerk's budget. Now this was a little on tighter, no, no, let me go back, I'm sorry, the advancement. We need to approve the advancement. The advancement this year, the sheriff's request from the state is $400,000. Understand, for everybody here today, the sheriff starts off January 1st with zero dollars in the bank. That's just the way they operate, unlike the clerk. And so it's important for them to have that cash flow. So I need fiscal court to approve this advancement.
Is this the only office that doesn't, we do this one?
Any other offices in the Commonwealth do that?
The sheriff's office is the only one.
The only one? Because most of your receipts come in.
What happens is we're a fee-based office and we basically collect the taxes and we get our fee from those. At the beginning of the year, like Judge said, we start out with zero dollars until we collect taxes. So starting January 1st, I open up my tax account finishing 2018. Until the end of January, I get my first set of fees from those collection of taxes and move forward. Until then, I have zero dollars to pay my salaries and run the office.
He's on a juice drink right now.
So back in the day, you either had to go to Wilson and Muir or one of the local banks and get a loan for it and still pay interest on it. With this, they started, it's a loan that the state gives you, adds zero percent interest and helps you run the office until the end of the year when you collect your first month of taxes and you can pay those fees back and it's pretty no-brainer.
Thank you, Rhonda. Motion to approve the order. Motion by Jeff. Seconded by Eric. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Okay, next would be the county clerk's budget. You guys got that emailed yesterday, Elaine, I'm sorry for that inconvenience. I have had a chance this morning to review the budget with the county clerk and her assistant here. Based on this year's revenue, there were some increases in the license and transfers and the tangible person with probable tax revenue increase. However, those are in and out monies, so there's no way of predicting how much is going to be carried over. If you'll go to the main thrust, what usually, what we usually look at is the salaries and the expenses of the office there. The salaries are well aligned with what was done last year, just a little bit above, about 2% above what was last year's. And actually, the county clerk's salary is reduced because Jeanette's a new clerk, she doesn't get the salary that Elaine had, it was about 10, eight or 10 grand different between the salaries. But you will advance up to that as you move forward with your training in years. Everybody understand that part of it?
Yep.
And I would recommend the court, I know you got this late, if we could go ahead and get this approved. Based on, thank you for that. Motion been made by Bernard, seconded by Jeff. Any other questions or discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Thank you, girls.
And we also have our order.
Oh, that's right, the order. I missed that. Back page, just one. It's on the back page, guys, the order on salaries, if I could approve for the sheriff. That amount was including the full-time salaries, overtime, part-time, vacation, sick and health and insurance. County pays retirement for the clerk and the sheriff.
I'll make a motion to.
Approve the order?
Approve the order.
Motion been made by Keith Metcalf, seconded by Gary. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Any questions, ladies? Any questions from us?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for working with us on that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the next order of business would be the second reading for the cable TV franchise ordinance. You guys approved a first reading at the last court meeting and advertised for a second. Motion to approve a second reading and adoption of the cable TV franchise ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made by Jeff Lear, sir, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Eric. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Okay, the old courthouse update, I put that on the agenda, I sent them a blue copy, a copy of the where everything was on that. Now he's got some nice pictures.
There's some good pictures thanks to Lee in the road.
Those pictures with clarity of those.
I seen Lee's big picture standing this way.
Oh, graduated from the Rose Garden. Actually, on the computer, you can zone in, you can zoom it in.
Those pictures are very clear. Basically, it's a, this morning, when the sun was really high, it had a, they were gonna start with the membrane roof this morning, but the rain put us back a little bit, so we'll start on that tomorrow.
The duralast roof.
The duralast roof, and that is just the front portions of it, so they, there's like a couple, about six places in the front, so they get that done.
I call them swimming pools.
Yeah, swimming pools, yeah. So everything, basically, the back part of the roof's been complete, the belt tire roof's complete, the metal shingles on the front side has been installed. So this week and next week, they'll finish with all the counter flashing, flashing on the sides around base where it ties into the brick, and then you do like your ridge cap on the ridge, on the ridges. So the membrane roof was supposed to be done this week and then the rest of the metal work will be done next week. So hopefully by next court meeting, we'll have some more drone pictures of the completed product.
And we want to zoom in on the caulking and the.
Yes.
Where it ties into the building.
Yep.
Well, where they did flashing it's on the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I know that teaches.
Yeah.
Thank goodness we've got a steep roof because you don't have as much in the area.
Yeah, and like a lot of your valleys, they have like two foot on each side, like your valley flashing and stuff, so it's, they did it really good. And we'll get up there, get closer and look a lot closer to the front of, we already browned that one to the back and you can see, like we have problem areas, basically kind of where our chimneys are, where that flashing was basically gone. They put really good flash in there to divert that water to not hit the chimney, go back in the wall, it diverts it out, back on the roof.
Can you look at the very last page? A lot of people, you know, they, that's right there. You can tell.
That's in the detail.
I asked Paige, bottom picture. See that red felt paper, see that black up against it? That's your first set of flashing gets put down.
So they came way up on the roof.
See that?
Yeah.
Then your shingles go over top of that and they do that same scenario out on the edges and then you actually have stuff flashing over top of that.
It's like an ice garden, right?
Correct.
It's an ice garden flashing over top of that.
Flashing over top of that, it's, and the flashing details, I mean, it's several layers of flashing. You put your initial flashing and then you put your shingles and you put flashing on top of that and seal, but seal and in between the two, so it's, it's a good system.
I guess that looks good.
This one, you have. I had one question.
Yep.
On the roof, you probably just said it's a prior meeting, but I wasn't here. What's the warranty on that roof?
I think it's 20 years.
Their last is 20 and I'm sure the shingles was 20. I don't, Gary, I'll find out.
We'll find out.
It's a good question. I couldn't remember if it was 20 or 25. Some of it, Gary, we got like color fading for so many years or the product itself so many years and we'll get it to you. You know, I went out to the dumpster and started getting, taking some of that metal, just seeing how bad, just see how bad the metal was. A lot of the metal was still fairly well, but some of the metal was pretty crumbly.
Here's some of it, this is, I bet you some of the plans, you can kind of see a lot of the details of how bad it was, like the flashing on the sides and there'll be something to flip through and take a look in, there's your deep flashing.
You get a lot of black on it, especially when it came up here.
How was that?
Yeah, for what they.
Can't put a handle on it.
And they tie these back in the mortar joints and still.
I will say this, the belt tire.
Flashing correct back under here.
Had a different stamp on it. Well, I mean stamp, the metal had different stamp.
Right there, yeah.
In my opinion, that belt tire was sheen original.
It steps up.
And when they changed this part of the roof out, the main part of it out.
Kind of maybe like a.
They didn't do the belt tire.
Foot section.
They just repaired it, past it. I mean, because there were completely different stamps.
That roof looks really good.
Couldn't find, remember Brad couldn't find that other stamp.
Correct.
So we just used the other stamp. Looks good from this.
It's the, yeah.
Thank you. Eric will find out for you. Okay, no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the next order of business and update on the amputator project. So I'll take that one. So where we're at is, I would say 95% of all concrete has been poured, there's one little section in between the building and what's called programp, which helps out a lot, guys. It's time of year to get concrete poured. Things get easier now. What started to occur last couple of weeks plus yesterday is now the building's starting to come up out of ground. So starting to see some wood being constructed in the building. They said in two weeks, what it would be if you're looking, if you're looking down from the audience, the building to your left, in two weeks, that steel will be up and the metal on the outside of the building will be up and then they'll move over to the other building. What we have to do once they get that building built, we gotta start putting those props back in there. Because some of them are so big and to get in, we gotta get that stuff in there while they're still building, so. It's a good project, it's come along, but they claim they still on track to get done by our deadline. We have had some.
What is that deadline?
April, I want to say the first of April, something like that.
You got a little bit, Jerry. Are you timed?
A little bit, not much.
You were gonna ask something, Keith.
You're talking about putting in props and it's about like putting a bathtub in a house before it's finished, you gotta, you gotta have it in there.
Some of it's not a problem, but there's two that are huge.
One of them on the hill, it's got a lot of tar.
Uh huh.
We gotta figure out how to get them in and move them around while they're still working and we'll figure it out.
Casters are one direction where they're designed, so we might have to put swivel casters on it temporarily to get it in to where we need it. Few details to work out.
One day I looked at it, it looked like a good job to me.
Yeah.
And we've done some other stuff.
Is it, is it basically the same size? Are they just building back the way that it was or they get?
The intent is, when you sit in the audience, it doesn't look that much different. So yes, it's basically the same size. The difference where you'll really notice it, if, I don't know if you ever went down there before, is before, once you got inside of the buildings down below, they have walls all the way through them. So it was real narrow shotgun little sections in the building. Now, once you get in the buildings, it can be totally open.
Oh, good.
And the goal with that is be able to use it for additional activities maybe, or whatever it is. You know, it's what a true engineering building is, it opens it up for you.
Right, right.
So yes, the same size, the two little houses out front, the intent is to make them back the identical to the way they were. I mean, we want the play to look the same.
Right, right, right. It might be a little bit brighter color as far as the houses themselves.
It will, I mean, but.
Basic same footprint though.
Yes.
Right.
Same footprint, yes. Okay, moving on, thank you Brad. Resolution, actually not an order, not a resolution, authorizing my new assistant Carol Bryan to be placed on all signature cards for check signing. Rhonda and I need a backup for that, if you guys would approve that order, I'd appreciate it. I got a motion from Gary first, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be appointments, an order appointing the following people to the fiscal court positions. Carol Bryan is my administrative assistant, human resources manager, Rhonda Fenwick as treasurer. Brad Spaulding is the county road engineer, Royce Fitzpatrick as animal control officer, Jill Pruitt as the EMA director, Jonathan Hendricks as assistant EMA director, and Logan Spaulding as the chief building official. Every term, we're required to make those new, those reappointments. Questions? Motion in order? Motion to approve by Bernard Ice, this is seconded by Eric. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Thank you all. I'm gonna sign this, I think give this to you. Thank you. Okay, road department report. That's Lee.
Tree debris cleanup from the trees and rain event. We did finish it pretty much right after the last fiscal court meeting. We've been shoulderin' the newly overlay roads. We have finished with all, all the children of the new roads. We're currently working on some roads that need shoulderin', like Woodlon Road, pretty much the Woodlon area right now. Got Woodlon Road, Tom Greer, Thomas Lane, Hilton Lane, Brown's Lane, so they're about to finish up in that area. We've had crews out doing, patching potholes this time of year, freeze thaw cycles, potholes are popping up quite regularly. We do in Hertz, the public, give us a call to report a pothole on any county maintained road and we will get out there and fix it pretty quickly. The boom mower is back in operation, happy to report.
You did have to bring it up every week.
We get some of your phone calls, but.
He's gonna get asked, yeah.
So we did have to replace a lot on it, but it is backed and running and we've been in Keith's district, District 1, finished up Walker Hall Road, Tim Hall Road, Stringtown, Price Creek, and I think we're finishing up Simon Creek on the day. The Woodlon slide, we're still continuing to slide in that area. When Brad was on vacation, I had a crew out there, we installed, replaced about 240 tons of the scrap concrete that we get from IMA. It is free material, works great, it worked great on Leonard Hall. Leonard Hall right now is holding up with it.
Good Lord's got more to do than the concrete.
That's right. The what's that? Good Lord's got more to do than the concrete.
District 1, that's why.
I'll take some help on Woodlon Road if he wants to give me some. It'll work out. We'll keep an eye on it. We know about it, Gary, if anybody reports it, we're monitoring it. It's not a real good solution to it without throwing a ton of money towards it. So just let us keep monitoring, if you hear anything, let us know, I mean, we're on top of it. Anything else, Lee?
That's about it.
We'll leave him home next night. Ian Mester for Jeff.
December run numbers come in at 586 calls or respond to in December. 129 of those were non-transport and fleet. We had to bring squads back from the UVA Bluefield Station 17 times to cover bars down during the month of December. And we had five tree no-transport type calls where we give assists such as that. Total calls for the year-to-date, six months, 3,422, averaging about 18.5 or 18.6 calls a day. But it's down from the last couple of years. I guess we've got a healthier community than we've had in the past couple of years, but that's good on one side and bad on the other, so. Also, as I am your extra pages, periodically at the end of each county year, I do a little statistical reporting for you. This year, I thought it would be worthwhile for the court to know that our first page there, average shoot time, shoot time is from the time we're notified to the time we're en route on the emergency calls. We're averaging 2.42 minutes on getting en route. On those calls, the average, national average is about three minutes, so we're in good shape there. The next page, that also gives you a breakdown by the timeframe when those calls come in on the bottom part of that. The next page is our average response time for emergency calls only, and that's all I'm gonna do, I think that's the most important part. Counting wise for the whole year, 11.23 minutes on our response time from time we go en route to the time we're on scene.
Okay, so technically, the time the calls, the person calls in the dispatcher, so you gotta add 2.42.
No, 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 no.
Does that inclusive with the 2.?
This includes that.
And closes it. We'll make sure this, I mean, that's a major difference.
Yes, no, no, this, this is from time we're en route and the time we get on scene.
And it seems like our.
Yeah. And as you look across, you see the spikes where it took, you know, quite a bit longer to get there, but that could be because we didn't have a truck available, that could be because we're going too far into the county, you know, so.
Could be that there were a little address problem.
That, you know, can't find it. Could be that it's an emergency transfer from a hospital, those type of calls, it takes us a little longer to get a truck in and going if we don't have one, but.
How do you determine emergency call? Is it, I guess it's the call itself?
Now, it's dispatch. The dispatcher takes the call and based on the information, meeting criteria the dispatch has, they tone it out as emergency. Now, if you get on scene, we may, we'll downgrade it or we'll keep it emergency, whatever it is.
But somebody called you in.
Based on the dispatchers, the tone out, what we're told when it's given to us, which is basic emergency.
Joe, if you could, if you could, there's one question, on the 11.23, I'd really like to know what the state average is.
Well, I tried to do that and demographics makes that very difficult to tend to. Our counting, I know is elongated, so you take, for example, LeRue County, they're they're.
They're shorter.
State-wise, you know, I can, I can pull that, but it's really not gonna tell you a lot based on the count. It'll give you kind of an idea, you know, overall.
I'd love to hear his.
Yeah. And I can pull that.
I'd like to have that.
And then the last page is the total calls we made for 2018. Give you, 6,835 calls were made in 2018. 1,389 of those were a non-transport type call. And this report kind of gives you an idea of when we take a transfer, basically, when we take a transfer from Flage A to a local hospital and sometimes Lexington Hospital or wherever, we have a truck out of service for three, three and a half hours. And then this, this report backs it up. I averaged 24 minutes, 13 seconds per call, start to finish, across the board.
Thank you. Do you have a report?
I guess I'll, I'm a bit busy trying to get all the patchwork back up in the state and we're waiting with the vendors and Jessica's gonna use the jail population.
Okay.
Right now, we are, today, we are at 150 inmates total. We have 39.
Inmate house?
Yes.
150?
We have 39 state inmates and 111 county inmates. We can break that down in female and male population, we have 112 male inmates, 38 female inmates. Circuit court, we have 72 inmates and district court, 39 inmates.
Thank you. On the jail report, I've got a little data on the sheriff and magistrate, especially the new magistrate, some of you guys have seen this before, so bear with me. You know, discussions the other day came up about a jail, new jail, a renovated jail, what are we gonna do in the future, why aren't we doing anything? There's no doubt in my mind that jail needs some attention. But in same token, I want you guys to understand what's going on in the state judicial system, and I think I put a copy of this in the mailbox. Talking about the ways to reduce incarcerations and that is the, like a three-day bailout type of thing, no matter what your income level, whether you've got the money to bail out or not bail out. I don't know how all that's gonna work, but this is the way of the future. That being the case, then if people can bail out typically in three days on a lot of your offenses, 50 or 60% of your inmates would be bailing out. I don't think that the reporting back to the court system's gonna be what the state thinks it is and that's gonna be the major malfunction in the, in the system, but I'm all in favor of getting some of these low-level prisoners out of the jails and housing them for six months, about four to five to six months, waiting for them to go to trial. This would help us tremendously. But still, still, that being said, we still need to look and I've already started doing some initial, not planning, but thinking on renovation to jail, possibly buying the property that they put in jail. Lot of different ideas, we've all talked about individually. But most certainly, the jails had a stage 11 years ago, 12 years ago, before you guys came on, before you came on Jeff, I had a plan to renovate the jail and add on to the jail and the court at that time chose not to. That would have been about a $2 million project. Probably would have put us in pretty good shape right now, I hate to say this, I told you so, but I'm telling you so, in my mind.
$2 million head right there.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be $2 million head, but we're gonna spend four or five million, $4 million. But anyway, the court was very conservative and decided not to and, you know, it was just my job to present it, but I'm gonna be doing, we're gonna be doing something over the next 12, 18 months on this property. I'm open for discussions on that subject matter.
I've got one question. Matthew, if they do do this, what's that gonna do to the Rocket Docket? Because right now, the Rocket Docket kind of speeds it up too, but not as much, and if this happens, how'd it do away with the Rocket Docket?
You might be able to do, but they're kind of two different things. You get people in on bond, and then the Rocket Docket's going to take people who are there on felonies. But yeah, they, they might be, it all depends. It depends on what they do with, with the bond.
Well, I mean, it's just a thought.
Some people are getting administratively released now, and this is just going to expand the program. But it's a good, it's a good question, yeah, it may, it may do away with it.
And then the Rocket, even though they're bailed out, the Rocket Docket could still be effective.
Well.
If.
But it's going to cut it in half, at least, maybe more than that.
Yeah, it's a good question, yeah, we'll have to look at it.
One more question from jailer. Do you have any plans on inmate cleaning up the roadways or anything like that?
Like saying, LaRue County does now, you have to start a plastic program. They have to supervise them, you know, like I said, you've got, we have to get a plastic coordinator to get that done.
We do have a, you know, Russell Cantag, he's, he has in the past kept his, I don't know if he's kept his training up or not, to take the inmates out. In years past, it's been difficult to get them to go out.
We get that back started, that'd be great.
It, you can't force them to go out.
Right, I understand. The trash on the roads is getting pretty bad, especially on Woodlong Road between Bluefield Road and Philly Ettry Lane and that curve.
It's not a road that don't just.
It's terrible.
New Haven Road.
I guess that's their dump.
That'd be great. You know, we can check, support the guys, the low-level inmates, if they can go out with them, I think it'd be great.
Bear in mind, today, you have 39 that would be eligible to go out if their offenses were proper. You'll narrow that down to probably less than a half a dozen that'd be eligible, you can.
We have three female, three males that would be on non-secure that can go outside.
Yeah, so you have total of six. And you can only ask them to go in, you can't tell them to go in.
You can't tell them to go in. Big volume.
Thanks, that was a good note, I knew it was a small amount.
Now, LaRue County, they got a grant on it, correct, to do?
I think theirs is state.
Let me tell you how LaRue County does that. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet contracts with various jails around the state. You have to have so many state inmate population. And, and so they pay for the supervisor to go out through a contract with District Four out of Elizabeth Town. And they can go to their 11 counties, and I think they've got two crews that go out, 11 counties they cover. And we get those folks on a regular basis. And so they do get to bounce around to 11 counties that covers District Four.
But they can only do state.
No, no, they do other roads for us, yes.
So I never see them on the county road.
We've used them from time to time, but primarily state roads.
And how often do they come to Nelson County?
Uh, it just depends on their rotation schedule, they go to the other counties too.
Now, Judge, that, I want to correct you, make sure, that is just state inmates.
Yes.
Not that there could be some county inmates, but.
We get a few, very few adjudicated county inmates.
Some of the, a lot of stuff's not in the computer to be able to get your statistics. And I think today, when I tried to run it, we had three listed as sentenced and 144 listed not sentenced. So it's training, getting the deputies to fit in, who's in the right places to run the reports, to get the accurate numbers. So there might be county inmates that would be eligible to go out also, but this is just the state members.
I would almost bet you out 150 inmates you have today, you have less than three or four people are charged with county offenses. Most of them are charged with state offenses. Which, which when they are sent to the court system, will be a state violation versus a county. So we get very few, right, Matthew? We have very few county.
We have DUIs that sit in there, is that considered state or county?
That's state. On our end, it is.
Okay.
On the paying end, it is. I can tell you, on the paying end.
Yeah, I don't know how they classify those misdemeanors, but sure.
No, that's a state offense, that's not a local ordinance.
So the only thing that counts as a county is a local ordinance?
That's, that's what, as county judges, that's what we look at.
You can add. There wouldn't be many at all.
It might be one or two.
Yeah.
Judge, I attended some training a couple of years ago, this update came up, sounds like a great idea, I was all in favor of it. There's significant liabilities to have a work release program or cleanup. Introduction contraband is a major factor. Liability if somebody escapes, or what if somebody gets, is out there and claims nothing gets hit?
We actually have an insurance, there's an insurance program that we buy on the inmates that used to buy, Ben, I'm sure you can still do it. They go out, but we have inmates go out for three years.
It just, there's, there's liability associated with it, it all sounds great, it might not be.
Yeah, I guess LaRue County is assuming that liability.
I assume so.
Let me just say this, LaRue County, but through their contract, their, we're buying that insurance policy. And we used to carry it all the time when we had inmates go out.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Recreation report.
Boys basketball had its first weekend games this weekend for the regular season. Spring soccer registration are now open. The baseball registration for the spring is open as well, and baseball park operations.
Manville Sawaway report, now.
It's the end of the year, or past the end of the year, so finishing up portal reports and annual reports. Other than that, just normal operations, just that wet, muddy time of year, trying to get people in and out, and it takes, it rains one day, it takes a week and a half to dry out, so it's. But really, the guys are doing a good job keeping roads in and out pretty good, so they're doing a fine job.
The free passes should be in their mail this month, right? Just keep, everybody keep out, look out for those, and then the bulk yard pickup will be the last weekend. Well, it'll start with last Monday in February.
We'll give another update when it gets closer to the end with different maps, the different areas when we'll start.
So we've already had a couple of sites that people started putting stuff out. And in particular, Indiana Sullivan Lane, two different occasions, there were pretty big piles. And. We need to talk about that, I think Russell could, with you on that, set some cameras out.
They had Russell, John, John took care of a little issue we had on Russell Road. About a week or so ago, I really appreciate him coming out to send, getting these guys out there to police up some debris that had been thrown out. It, it gets him a crawl, you know, because, I mean, there's no reason for that, you know, it just, but I just want to thank you publicly for that, because I know it was above and beyond, really, especially when you get bulk yard pickup, free trash, dump passes, there's really no sense in people throwing out bulk items on the side of the road.
Okay, under old and new business, there's a report in your, in your mail, Sheriff's Tax Bill receipt. Need to, just, no, no fiscal motions necessary under this or order, just enter this as a matter of public record.
I don't know if I got that.
Did you get a copy of that? Last week, probably, last court meeting, probably? Okay, I'm sorry. It's a matter of record, anyway, you don't have to approve it or disapprove it. If you did get, I had an email from you yesterday. In regard, in regards to the painting of the sheriff's office. We got a new sheriff in town. You watch those old westerns, we got a new sheriff in town. And he wants to do some painting of the office, Keith Willard, our maintenance super guy, got, got four bids on that. Various broad area, I've never seen, it depends on, somebody who needs to work, I guess, who wants to work during the winter months. But the Dever painting was a low bid at $7,000, that's the interior of the sheriff's office. Of course, that, part of that's got the, got the wallpaper on it.
Wallpaper on the block.
It would be a good winter job for a painter to have. And we're going to move some money around in the budget to make it work. We did not have that in the budget, but I think it's a good time to do it, you got a new, new sheriff that's trying to make improvements in the office. It'll be a good time to do it. Do a motion to approve Dever painting, because it's above my $5,000 limit. And we're going to talk about that another day, too.
I'm ordering it for.
Motion to approve, Bernard, Dever paintings are second to the motion.
Second.
Oh, my goodness, they crawled, they, they, everybody was quiet on that one, second by Jeff.
It looks like a bargain there compared to the others.
How could you pass it up? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. And, and that's something just from, just a discussion down the road is, our administrative code is 20-odd years old. And some of that entails that anything over $150 the county judge has to sign off on, that might be a little antiquated. Anytime you buy a part anymore for a piece of machinery, we might need to up that to about 200, I'm not going real far, but we'll talk about that. Look at Lee. He killed me, and the more I said for half an hour, doing Lee's purchase orders.
How much square foot is the sheriff's office, Judge?
Uh, it's about, let's see, that whole building was about 30,000. So it's about 12,000, probably.
About 12,000.
10 or 12, 10 or 12, yeah. But, and also in administrative code, county judge has authority to spend up to $5,000, so this is an emergency. And then there's a procedure I follow if it's over that. And somewhere along the line, we might want to look at going up to about 7,500 on that.
I was thinking 51.
But anyway, we'll talk about it. It works what we're doing, but it would make Lee's job a little bit easier from time to time, and Brad's as well, and John. John, John's, he's getting almost as good as Lee's with those purchase orders, for those parts. But we'll talk about that.
About $150.
And I think, Rhonda, you would agree maybe with that, and without me twisting your arm, because he has to go through all those as well.
So you got to issue a purchase order and you have to sign it before they can even go get the part?
Oh, anything over $150 unless it's an emergency, most, and let me just tell you, these guys, they get the part and then they send the purchase order. Not leaving. It depends on the circumstances, I'm not answering.
You got to get the job.
Yeah, you got to get the job, and if you got, you got to have it no matter what.
Right.
But anyway, I think it would be a good idea for us to revisit that. But it works pretty well. Okay, for elected officials that are here today, all the elected officials, the KCO is asking for updates on any of the information they want to put in their, in their book that they sent out. I've got a list, I'm going to lay it out in front. Check this out and off to the side, make any changes that you wish to have, whether it be your addresses, your email addresses, and so forth, if you don't mind. That goes for the sheriff as well, and the county clerk, jailer, if you'll look through those, and just real neatly out here, and print if you can, so I can send this back in to the KCO. Do this after the court meeting if you don't mind, I'll lay it up here. Magistrates, you have anything else to discuss, Keith?
Are we going to dress up at the next meeting to take a new court picture since we got?
You'll remind me.
If we got new magistrates, I think it would be a good idea.
Lee, you did that for us last time, didn't you?
Somebody did.
Who was?
Seems like Betty was the last one.
That's only 20 years ago? How long you been there, Rhonda?
We'll take it on ourselves, honestly, because we're always.
Well, we, we did it when I was first elected.
And, and we're, we're going, this, this year, we're going to redo our, our website, we've already talked, I've already talked to some individual companies. Lee, Lee put us on the, on the map, and he's agreed that, and it probably needs an elevation, the next step up, right, Lee?
Yes.
Don't hurt anybody's feelings, but you did a great job for us, but it is time to revisit that, so. I'll, if you, everybody will remind us at our next court meeting, we'll just wear a coat of time.
One more thing, I would like to thank all you newly elected officials for wanting to serve Nelson County. Thank you very much.
Let me lay this out, we'll do this, we're going to closed session, then you guys just hang around.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, that might be good.
Having the fiscal court support our, our office, and what I mean by that is having the double budget. Fiscal court does, does the payroll for some of our guys. Jody is being promoted to the chief deputy spot, and he comes from the fiscal court budget. And I just felt that it was the right thing to introduce my staff. I know three of them are not here because they're either working night shifts or, or at the courthouse. But Jody comes with 18 years plus of law enforcement experience, from the patrol, to detectives, to the school resource office. And I, I am very pleased to have him as my right hand at the sheriff's office, and he comes from fiscal court side. And Dicky Jones, he's going to be the road captain, and he comes out of the sheriff's budget. And Dicky is probably back in the AD era, but he comes with probably 20-some plus years.
He means old.
Yes. I think he, he, he can teach everybody a little something. He's going to be leading the, the road deputies, and my two night shift supervisors who are not here, Lieutenant Caleb Matthews, and Kevin Cox was promoted to sergeant. And I left out the court security, Kelly Littlefield, he runs a good show over at the sheriff's, at the courthouse. And we're looking to, to ramp up their, their security services over there with AOC. With that being said, I'm going to be very transparent with the courts and, and put everything out front. I, I really, really appreciate you guys helping us with the painting of the office, it was much, much needed. And anytime that you guys are, are welcome to stop by and, and see us. I even welcome you guys to come do ride-alongs with the guys and, and see what your services at the sheriff's office are. Yesterday, or actually Saturday, we implemented our new schedule, we combined the department and the schedules. We're putting more deputies on the road effective Saturday, and what I mean by that, it's at zero cost, there's no overtime, there's no excess of, of fees to, to the budget. Basically, all I'm doing is combining the two teams, having less guys off, more guys on. And with that being said, yesterday, we stopped at seven schools in Nelson County, all the way from Boston to New Haven, St. Catherine, Cox's Creek, St. Gregory, Thomas Nelson, and Nelson County High School. And that's something that we're going to start doing. We're not going to be able to provide an SRO, but we're going to be able to provide presence for our, our kids' safeties and, and the schools. And we will continue to do that throughout the whole year. And just a few little updates on, on the sheriff's office in the short eight days that we've been in, in office, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, this time, in a painted motion to go out of regular session and closed session, per ARSC money again. One sees the sessions that propose the federal litigation against the behalf of the code agency. Motion, in order. Go to Gary, second.
I'll say.
Second by Eric, all approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. For everyone involved, there probably will not be any action, 99.9%, and you're welcome to hang around though. I ask the courtroom to be clear, please. Tannet's got the paper, you take it outside, some of the folks outside can go ahead and check their, their list there. All right, everybody. At this time, make sure my recorder's ready back here. This time, I would entertain a motion to go out of closed session and back into regular session.
Make a motion to go back into regular session.
Motion been made by Jeff Leirs, her second, by Gary Coulter, all approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Under old and new business, I want to bring up something, since my brain got a little free while you were all discussing things a few minutes ago. Up on the wall over here is a, is a report I put together about two years ago or so, Jimmy Brooks, remember that?
Yeah.
It basically shows what, at that time, the city of Barstown was proposing an occupational tax increase. And, and I adjusted, in pen, I adjusted some of the numbers there to show, show what it did to that particular person. Basically, I'm showing a single parent, a single mom, typically over 50% of the households are single-income families, and what everything that we do as a legislative body, how it impacts their, their spending power and their money, and I'll bring it back up here in a minute if you guys can see it. As we move forward into the new year, new magistrates, it is time for us to start reviewing the, all of our, our fees that we charge for various services that we provide for the community, and in particular, don't be looking like a fake, Keith. But, you know, you can get behind, and then we do raise them, and then you're really in trouble down the road. We have four years left in our terms, and it would be prudent for us to make sure that we have the funds going forward, enough to operate the garbage service, operate the other services, electrical department, the building code. Building code, we just changed that about a year, year and a half ago. We haven't updated our electrical fees since we started electrical, electrical department. And, and we're talking about possibly taking the electrical fees up to state fees, what people want to state recharge. We did, you guys remember, we did a building code that way, and it's proven pretty successful for us. Garbage fees, landfill fees, it's been about five years or so since we've looked at those. So we need to look at those, and we'll be looking at, but the point I'm making to you is, whatever we do affects a person. So I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, aren't I?
Would just cost, would just cost that person $2,000 more for the life payment. Do you have that on there?
No, that, that person already has a house.
Oh.
I got you on that one.
That's factored into $600 a month.
Yeah, thank, thank Eric.
Yeah, but that's all, the news.
Planting zoning fees, see, I mean, the whole inch of lot, and it is, it is time to take a look at that, you know, we're still subsidizing, uh, plantings onto the taxes, we're still subsidizing the building inspection program, the code, uh, office back here through the taxes, so, and the closer we can get to, uh, making those fees, uh, sustain the program, the better off we'll be in the future. Bottom line, just, probably get a little.
Is, is it making its own way right now?
Which one is?
Olive.
No, no.
Subsidized by the state through the taxes, correct?
No, the, the, the billing, billing the electrical now is being subsidized by the tax dollars, just a little bit, but just a bit. The fees here at the solid waste program, we're good there, and landfill, we're good there, but we need to look at where we're gonna be five years from now, cause you're gonna, five years from now, you're gonna be building the next phase of landfill.
And we already got all that in works, right?
Well, we, we got.
You have money set back for closure.
But not.
You have a little bit of money set back.
Not expanding, we're supposed to.
Oh, we're doing that, uh, we're starting doing that, but we gotta, you gotta plan for the future, you saw the article that, uh, I think Bernard sent from the Pike County landfill.
Didn't plan, did it?
Uh, didn't plan at all, and, cause we planned, I think we'll be fine, but, uh, most certainly, we need to look at all aspects, in particular, those electrical fees, we haven't raised the electrical fees since day one.
How does it compare to, how do we compare to, like, Bullock County?
I'm gonna get all, all those things for you.
All those.
Uh, I, I wanna look at what the state charges, and, and, and that's what we based our building code, uh, our other billing, uh, fees on, you guys approved those probably about a year or two ago, a couple of years ago.
Last year, I'm looking for.
Was it my, then last year?
And Judge, like I found a nineteen eighty-one fee schedule for our office, when McGuire was here, you could get his own change for a one-acre lot for a hundred dollars, and we charge a hundred and sixty-one now.
That's how long ago?
Eighteen eighty-one.
What's fifty-one dollars to that?
Well, you're subsidizing plantings, owning, it's, it's running about seventy percent, sixty-five percent taxpayers, and the rest of it's fees.
Just beware, I'll, I'll be bringing things on, you'll be educated on subsidies, but I wanna make the public aware, it is time to start looking at the planning for the next week, we, I think we've done a good job the last twenty years or so planning, uh, just be aware, okay? Questions?
So you're, you're, you like to operate on everything fee-based, then, is that correct?
Well, we'll never be a hundred percent fee-based.
Never.
Yeah, if they wouldn't be able to afford, wouldn't be able to afford, they'd be, they'd be jumping the tarp seven dollars.
Right, right. The girl's in Nelson County. The girl's in the county has kept everything going, and it's worked for the last eight years that I've been on court.
But our, our housing is down, and so that's, you know.
Our housing is down, but our industry's up.
The bourbon has, has been very nice to our, our office.
That's a whole lot higher than the housing was, so.
It was, but that's also my.
That's gonna level off somewhere.
Could stop tomorrow, I understand.
Well, it's already, I mean, we haven't had anywhere near what we did last year, so.
But, uh, this, the January, February, March is a good time to start getting some numbers together, and at least, at least review where we are, and, and our revenue, uh, revenue with the landfill, I think it's pretty stagnant right now, uh, even though it's good, but stagnant, there's no growth, come out to anything in revenue, I'm talking about net, not gross, net revenue.
Yeah, I'd just like to see a comparison.
We will, we'll bring, I just want you to be aware of it, uh, that's on my mind, and that's what I'm charged to do with, to do with, pardon my tone, anybody else have anything we want to talk about?
You don't discuss the, uh, dog thing?
Animal control, Keith's asking me about the animal control, um, deal with the Humane Society, um, been talking and discussing, I, I've discussed it with Royce, I've discussed it with Judy, probably leaning towards, Pines and or two, by the way, the phone's being held.
It wasn't that one.
It was earlier.
Turn yours off.
I turned it off.
It wasn't mine.
Sure, but we talked about, probably just going forward with hiring our own employees.
It's fake news, man.
I don't know if any other, I'm open for suggestions, but, uh, it's clearly that, and I understand Judy's position, and why, they're still gonna operate the adoption center and the, and the, uh, the, uh, place where the animals are, the clinic itself, they're still gonna, they're, they're gonna be involved, but this is the intake facility, I talked to Royce at length yesterday, I knew it about, and we're gonna come up with something to present to you guys, but it probably won't be as cheap as what we're getting it done.
That's probably true.
Why, why do you say that?
Cause you have employees, you have benefits.
Yeah, I know, I know, but we're already giving her, what, sixty-seven thousand each?
Two years, three years, some change. You hire one employee, you pay them a decent salary, let's say, what, what, what would you consider a decent salary?
Thirty-four, Ben, what do you got, fill that and add the forty-five thousand dollars.
For one employee?
That's just a, hey, you got the benefits in yet? Retirement?
Twenty-five percent.
If they take a family health insurance policy, you add twenty by twenty grand to it. If they take a family policy, we've got five, twelve, fifteen family policies, you don't know that till you hire that person, you say, and they're eligible for that, those benefits. Then you take seven point six five on social security match, and you have retirement at about sixteen, seventeen percent?[1694.02]